Krista, feel it. We're in the.
I'm ready.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Anine bujoo. We're going to get started with the tribal council meeting today. And I want to welcome everybody who's online and those here in the audience that are with us. And we will start out by calling our meeting to order at 6:03 PM. And what we'll do for invocation, we don't have our spiritual advisor here this evening, so we will do a moment of silence. So we'll do a moment of silence. Can you hear me now? Oh, can you hear me? Hello? Yes, okay. Yes. Okay, so pause on our agenda? We go on the agenda? Our apologies to those online that couldn't hear us. We called the meeting to order at 6:03, and then we have invocation next with Vern Adams. So we will have invocation done by our spiritual advisor Vernon Adams. Oh, Gee Migwich. Okay, we've already done roll call, so we're next on the approval of the agenda. We've added Shane Drift after Aaron Danielson, roll call vote audits and feasibility study for cannabis, lease modification under Kim Greiner for 105L. And we removed Pam Hughes, Tony Wakeham, Melissa Walls, Sean Allen, and Laura Palambi. We've also taken off the agenda under Lance Hill, lease termination and resolution 32-2024, resolution 33-2024 for Lance. And Nikki, do you have anything else?
Miranda will be presenting for Kathy Holman.
Miranda will be presenting for Kathy Holman. If no other additions, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda with those additions and deletions.
Move.
Move by Shane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Travis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oops, opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have meeting minutes from November 1st, 2023. With regards to the last meeting, we tabled the Boyce Ford Housing Essential Housing Policy and Boyce Ford Housing Law Enforcement Family Policy. It was going to be put on the agenda today, but our attorney Jeff Hall still is looking for some clarification from HUD, so that might be able to be put on our next agenda once he gets that clarification. Any questions on the meeting minutes for November 1st? If none, I'll call for a motion to approve the meeting minutes. November 1st, 2023, held at Lake Vermillion. Move by Tara. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have the consent agenda. We'll start with that. Approve selecting SRF Consulting Firm for Transportation Planning, RFP, 400. Approve the 2023 Holiday Memo, 400. Approved contract with Martenson Electric to complete work for New Moon, 400. Approve sole source request to CNC Winger Incorporated for Fire Hydrant Repairs, 400. Approved contract for demo and cleanup services to Utevich Enterprises, 400. Approved Resolution Number 27-2024 Agreement with Utevich Enterprises for Home and Demo Cleanup Services Part of Contract Being Paid Out of ARPA Funds, 400. Approved Resolution 28-2024 SRF Task Order 1... Is that an... Okay, Task Order 16171.03, Grant Writing Services Related to the MinDOT Active Transportation Grant and Authorizing Use of ARPA Funds. Approved Proposal for DISC Communication Skills Training. Approved RFP for Strategic Planning Services for Five-Year Plan for Tribal Government. There is a denial by Shane, 310. Approved Contract with Native Pride Productions for KBFT Event, 400. Approved Grant Submission of Carryover Funds for Behavioral Health, 400. Approved to Use Leftover Urban Offices Food Assistance Program Money to Purchase Holiday Food Boxes for Minneapolis Urban Office, 400. Approved to Hold Raffle to Raise Money for M. Gogolai, 400. Approved Conservation Fund Joint Letter RE Meeting with Bands on Minnesota School Trust Project, 400. Approved Annual Renewal of Laser Feast Subscription for $60,100, 400. Approved Sole Source Request to Sundancer Solutions MLR Prodigy for Annual Fee, 400. Approved FCC Biennial Ownership Report for KBFT, 400. Approved to Support the HHS CEO to Continue Pursuing a Model of Delivery of Mental Health Services, 400. Approved the Amount of $50 for the Elders for Their 2023 Holiday Gift, 400. And that's the end of the consent agenda.
Just regarding the letter "aye," where I moved to deny it, is that I believe that the council and the senior management are capable of doing, building a strategic plan. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
What you're saying is you want it, you think we can do it in-house rather than going out? Okay, thank you Shane for that clarification. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Move by Travis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Okay. Next, we have Lance Hill. And Lance is on Zoom or Teams, whatever. Can you hear us, Lance?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Barely hear him.
Okay, hang on here.
Okay.
Nikki, before we get started, Nikki, there's some people waiting to get in the meeting.
Are we moving?
Oh, there you go. Go ahead, Lance.
All right.
Resolution Number 31-2024 Residential Lease Donald Vilibren Senior and Tina Vilibren.
That's correct. I'm getting feedback on my... It's kind of throwing me off, but just bear with me.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so Boyce Ford Realty is hoping to, is seeking council approval on the Lissy's behalf of the issuance of a new lease, residential lease for Donald Vilibren Senior and his wife, Tina Vilibren, and the accompanying resolution which you mentioned.
Is this adding Tina to the lease or just a renewal of the residential?
It's... The backstory goes, the lease was issued back in 1993, has expired recently, so therefore is canceled in the eyes of the BIA.
Oh, okay.
So we're, sometimes that's easier. You get a clean slate and just start a new request.
Okay, thank you, Lance. Any questions for Lance on the residential lease?
Yes. With that Indian Point, history behind that is that the Drift family resided there before there was even a reservation. So my question is, is that with all these leases that are there, and we know that there are grave sites there, has the Tippel people been involved to look to search, look for graves? You don't know?
Not that I... Go ahead, Lance.
On any of the existing leases, I have to believe that the Tippel was involved as their part of the process for any approved leases. Now, moving forward, if there is undeveloped land in which people are, you know, there's always going to be a concern of the unknown, so the Tippel would be involved. Last time I heard, some of the undeveloped lots, that was of Donald and Tina's lot, there are suspected that they might get unmarked graves. So there's no further plans to develop south of this lot. As for their lot, it has met approval prior.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of graves down at Indian Point, because I remember when, and this is way back when, when Laverne King, I think, was building his garage, they found a grave. And I know they had the spiritual advisor come in, and I think they relocated that individual. But yeah, I don't know if Tippel's been down there recently with the undone, you know, with the open ones. So I think that's a good suggestion, though.
Yes, I think that can have a look at that during, at some time, either in the spring or even early summer, to start marking off the areas that do have the graves. Thank you.
I believe Duck, I stopped down earlier this summer checking out his stuff, and he had mentioned that Jay had been down there. The place where he was going to build was, he said it was okay.
Yeah, I think that for some of the new lots that might be having stuff built on them, that would be a requirement to have Tippel go in. Thanks, Shane. If no other questions, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 31-2024 Residential Lease for Donald Vilibren Senior and Tina Vilibren?
Move.
Move by Tara. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Travis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Thank you, Lance.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we have Christine Lundamal. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a really quick comment on the lease. It says Tina Vilibren is a non-Boyce Ford member, and she is a member of the First Nations. So I just wanted that noted, and maybe that's something that we should include in our new leasing, you know, as far as priority. You know, they should have, they should be sitting on some sort of priority, especially if they're a spouse.
So, yeah, thank you. Luke, if you could get ahold of, and Lance incorporating the First Nations individuals into the leasing policy. We should set up a meeting on that leasing policy to go over the comments so it can get finalized, so Lance has something to go by, updated policy. So we'll set, Luke, if you can set up a meeting on that, I appreciate it. Next, we have Christine Lundamal with Sole Source Request and Contract for First Day Learning, Inc. Christine, are you on?
Here I am. Hello.
Sorry, you scared me. Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I was just requesting that the contract for First Day Learning be approved and also sole source, because it is, it's a two-day training. And the price is $9,940. We're going to use our CCDF and our Head Start, our state Head Start grant to pay for this training, so I'm just requesting your approval for it.
Okay, and Jeff's reviewed the contract, Christine?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Christine? If no questions, I'll call for a motion to approve the Sole Source Request and Contract for First Day Learning, Inc., for $9,940 to be paid out of the CCDF and State Head Start grant.
Move.
Move by Shane. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Good job, Christine. Thank you. Good job, Lance. Two ahead. Forgot about you. Next, we have the Donation Committee. And the Donation Committee has three recommendations. Recommendation number one is $500 to the 2023 Northwoods Cheer. Do you want to do them singly or all together? All together? Okay. Next request is $500 to 2023 Iron Range Cheer Booster, and $500 to 2023 Northwood School Streaming. So do we have a motion to approve those donation recommendations?
Move.
Move by Travis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Robert. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Okay, next, we have Doris Eishem. Good evening, Doris.
So what I just handed out was a draft of a proposal that I'm working on, and it's not completed yet, but I end with my packet when I submitted the agenda request. I included a pre-application. This proposal is, the title of it is Electrifying Tribal Communities. And it's a very competitive grant, and it started with pre-apps. And if you made it past the pre-app, then they invited you to submit a full proposal. And we did get that invitation to submit a proposal. Well, the process for that grant application is working with some very high-tech educated engineers. I had, I met with them on last Friday, and there was like five of them, and so I felt very intimidated with all their knowledge. So anyway, what they're doing is providing technical assistance, and so when we get done working on that part, then this draft that I gave you will be implemented into their format and incorporate some of their comments on whatever they think I should add. For the audience's sake, basically what it is is electrifying tribal communities, and what I'm writing for is to hire a contractor, a person that will be knowledgeable about renewable energy and, in particular, solar energy with the intention of developing a solar farm. And that's very, doesn't only include the solar farm, it includes the retrofitting of people's homes to accept the power from the grid from a solar farm. And so it's a big project, and I feel strongly that we need somebody on board that is knowledgeable in that, that can help us and direct the project, do the planning part of it so that, and then help us write the grants to implement the project. Also included in this grant is going to be money to train individuals from the community in how to operate and maintain a solar energy farm and the power lines that go to the people's houses. And in talking with Vonda, we're talking about bringing the training to Netlake and collaboration on, we'll be collaborating on that to get our people trained and how, you know, from the installation up to maintaining and repairing. And so that's what this grant is being written for, the planning part of it. And so I have a resolution. Well, the grant is going to be written for $294,800 for one year. And depending on how that first year goes, we may be eligible to apply for future funding. So I'll just read past the legal jargon that goes in all resolutions to the third, whereas the US Department of the Interior announces funding under the Inflation Reduction Act for its tribal electrification program to provide for clean energy household electrification projects to benefit tribal communities. And whereas the band submitted a pre-application for TEP funding, and the Office of Indian Economic Development has invited the band to submit a full application, and whereas the band's full application requests funding for a solar energy project contractor, meeting expenses, local travel, and costs of solar operations, training, and education, all to increase the band's capacity to develop, implement, and sustain a renewable energy program and renewable energy initiatives within the band. Now therefore be it resolved that the RTC does hereby endorse and approve, approve the submission of a full application for grant funding under the US Department of the Interior's Tribal Electrification Program funded by the Inflation Reduction Act. Be it further and finally resolved that the RTC does hereby approve... Be it further and finally resolved that the RTC does hereby approve the project described herein and proposed under the band's full application. I submit that for your consideration if there's any questions.
Doris, we know that there's tons, I won't say tons, but there's a lot of money out for climate, resiliency, energy, and this is an area that we don't even have a department in. So I think, yeah, the engineers and stuff, they, they know their stuff. And I think this is a great, a great application. A question that, you mentioned that they'll be providing some technical assistance like retrofitting people's homes or anything. Are we looking at any of our government buildings or businesses as far as retrofitting for any type of solar? Could we incorporate that in there? Is that a different, could we do that on a different project?
That, that cannot be included in the planning.
Okay.
Under, well, we will be looking at the HUD homes and then
Okay.
we will be, also be looking at private homes in the planning process. But we did get a grant through the grid program. And I was looking at that project too, that I kind of put in, included in this program.
Okay.
Just to add evidence that we're preparing and that we're ready for projects. And the grid project can, besides replacing some of the outdated electrical boxes out at Palmquist in those houses, it can also allow us to hire someone to do an energy audit.
Oh, good.
And that audit will be on people's homes on the reservations and also the businesses.
Good.
So that we'll have documented proof on where we are and our energy usages, the costs, the outages, the whole, the whole thing.
Nice. Because I know we had consultation with MPC and they made us aware of some grants that could be used for government buildings. And they didn't really mention, like other businesses, said government buildings. But there's, like I said, there's a lot of money out there. So the energy out, you need the documentation, the data for these grant applications. So this will be very helpful, very helpful. Is there any questions or comments for Doris?
Yes. I think it's like the third page in, and we're talking about training tribal members. And do you have like a ballpark figure? How many will be able to train with these dollars?
The program that Vonda has worked with before, oh, she's on board, she's online. Vonda, do you want to explain? Jump in here?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. So if you recall, we had had planned with a solar energy company last time to come in and do some training with our band. At that time, they said we had five. So I put out the ad hoc text, and I was able to get the 11 band members on board to participate. However, a week before the training, the trainer canceled the training. And we were then able to reschedule the training. And that's when I got the phone call that there was some issues with the company and the contact that I'm no longer going to be working with. And so speaking with Doris today, I let her know that if it all goes well, I still have all the contact information and I've reached out to however many individuals that have yet approved with the agreement.
My other question, or my comment too, is that, you know, that's great that, you know, that you did this, you're applying for this. And now we're starting to take a step in that direction. And eventually, I think we'll be getting charging stations at the store, I think, you know, for them cars that like, you know, you see them at the Black Bear. See them charging stations. I'm pretty sure we'll be heading in that direction pretty soon. So I think we got to try to do all we can to help with the climate crisis. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Shane. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 34-2024, Approval to Submit Electrifying Tribal Communities Grant Application in the Amount of $294,800?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Travis, seconded by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Silent? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. Good job.
I have another resolution. About a year ago, we were successful in obtaining a grant through the Safe Streets for All project. And, and that, that project was funded at $221,820. And what that project will do is develop an action plan for the Public Works Department, or actually the Transportation Department. And, and looking at the grants that are available to apply for, many of them require an action plan be in place. Now, Boysport does have a safety plan and we recently updated that. And that will be, it's been finalized right now and it'll be brought forward to the council, maybe at the next meeting for approval. This grant was to develop an action plan. And so it takes off from the safety plan, where the safety plan will identify the safety issues in transportation on the reservation. The action plan will develop a plan in how to address correcting those safety issues. And so we put this, we got the grant for planning and we put the RFP out. And SRF was the successful bidder. And so I have reviewed, or Jeff has reviewed the contract. And between the two lawyers, they went back and forth a little bit to satisfy the, the contract. And so I have a resolution before you for your consideration. And I will, for the audience's sake, I will read part of the resolution. Whereas the band received a grant from the, from the U.S. Department of Transportation under its Safe Streets and Roads for All grant program, which supports planning, infrastructure, behavior, behavioral and operational initiatives to prevent death and serious injury on roads and streets involving all roadway users. And whereas the band subsequently issued a request for proposals to solicit a contractor to develop a community safety action plan or action plan using SS4A grant funds that will qualify for a Safe Streets for All implementation grant. And whereas based on the proposals submitted, the RTC selected SRF Consulting Group for the contract award. Whereas the band and SRF have negotiated an agreement for completion of the action plan, which is heretofore attached as Exhibit A, and fully incorporated herein by reference agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved, in consideration of the mutual covenants and terms set forth in the agreement which is attached, the RTC now approves the agreement, directs and authorizes the RTC Chairperson Kathy Chavers to execute the agreement as well as any other related documents needed to effectuate the terms and conditions of this grant.
Okay. Any questions for Doris on the resolution? You're a busy woman. That's all I got to say. If no questions for Doris on the contract for SRF Agreement for SS4A Action Plan, I'll call for a motion to approve.
Move.
Moved by Shane. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Robert. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Silent? Motion carried. Great job, Doris. Thank you. Oh. Next, we have Miranda Lilia. Waiver of ID fee to correct tribal ID cards to correct information and update on the burial fund policy. Good morning, good morning. Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening, Miranda. Not used to that. Holy cow.
It's on, it's on if it's red, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That was funny.
The first waiver is, is a waiver to, a request for council to waive the $12 replacement fee for a tribal ID that needs to be updated. Remember, the tribal IDs used to say Minnesota Chipewa tribe on it. In June, something was updated with the card and then it was printed with Boysport Band of Chipewa on it. It came to our attention, I believe, by District Rep. Moyer that those were not being accepted by TSA for travel. Then we come to find out it was printed with the wrong heading on it. So now we have it corrected. We can get it printed again with Minnesota Chipewa tribe. So any band member who received the tribal ID with Boysport Band of Chipewa on it, if they want an updated ID, we want, we're requesting to waive that $12 fee. It would be during that time, we have record of who received tribal IDs during that time. So we're just requesting from council to, to get that $12 waived.
Yeah, and these are real IDs that can be used with traveling on airplanes and whatever, and border crossings. And it wasn't noticed until, I think, a couple of weeks ago or whatever, three weeks ago. Travis Morrison noticed that his tribal ID said Minnesota Chipewa tribe and the rest of ours said Boysport Band of Chipewa. And we said, hey, when did that happen? Well, I know Kathy found out that that was something on the, not on our side, but on the other side that deals with the tribal IDs. And so the people just need to bring in their current ID that says Boysport Band of Chipewa and present it to Kathy then. And then she will get, they'll get a new one printed with Minnesota Chipewa tribe.
Yes. And those band members who are off reservation, they can go to the urban offices and present the information. And we would, usually what happens is the urban office coordinators take the information, they send it up to us. We print the ID and we mail it to those band members. But they have to go to the